Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the West Covina Planning Commission for Tuesday, February 12, 2019. We will begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, which I will lead. And if you would remain standing after that for a moment of silent prayer or meditation, please rise.
Ready to begin.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Mr. Director, may we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Holtz.
President.
Commissioner Hing.
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Here.
Commissioner Haques.
President.
And Chairman Redholtz.
Here. Thank you. I want to take just a moment at the top to introduce, we have two new planning commissioners that are joining us. This is their first meeting tonight. As planning commissioners, I'd like to introduce Glenn Kennedy and Greg Haques.
Haques.
Haques. So they are joining us tonight, and we'll hear a little bit more about them later on in the agenda. Thank you very much. We will now, oh, while I do that, before I do that, I also just want to mention, I want to thank Commissioner Ashley Rosati, who filled in here for three meetings in the interim, and she did a good job for us, and we appreciate that she stepped up to help us out. So, thank you, Ashley. Now, we will move on to the consent calendar. The only item on the consent calendar is approval of minutes from our meeting of January 22nd, and that would involve Commissioners Holtz, Hing, and myself. Any changes to the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes will be approved as presented. Next item is oral communications. This is when any member of the public can address the commission on items that are not on the agenda. I don't have any cards. Anyone wish to speak to us on a non-agenda item? Seeing no response, we will move right on. We have no public hearings tonight, so we will move right into item number two, which is a non-hearing item. This is the initiation of code amendment number 19-01. Mr. Planning Director, or Mr., whatever your new title is.
Just don't call me late for dinner.
Don't call me late for dinner.
Yeah, so this is a request for initiation by the, the quester is Paige Gosney. He is representing Replanet, and they are interested in pursuing a small recycling facility at a shopping center where Stater Brothers is, at the corner of Amar in Valinda in West Covina, and because of the way our code is now structured, requiring a minimum distance of 250 feet from any site zoned residential, that site has nowhere on the site that can meet that standard. So they're asking for consideration in the planning commission initiating a code amendment to allow us to study and see if there's any way we could create a code standard that might allow them to operate in that center. So that's, that's their proposal. There is a, if, if this was to be initiated, the applicant has agreed to pay for that. We would, initial deposit of $2,500, we would track how much it costs us to process. So because it is initiation per our code, the code says that a planning commission or the city council can initiate a code amendment through a resolution. We have the resolution, which is attachment number one in the staff report that would allow that to occur. And just for sake of some of our newer members, we, an initiation of a code amendment does not by itself mean that it has to be approved. It basically opens up for staff to start reviewing and, and coming and bringing information back to the planning commission to consider whether or not we can craft changes that might be acceptable to everyone. There have been code amendments in the past that have been initiated and then rescinded after, without any action being taken to change the code. So I wanted to make that clear as well. And so that would conclude my, my comments. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And Mr. Gosney is here in the audience, if you have questions for him tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Yes, Mr. Holtz.
What is the distance right now that you said it's not 250? What is it?
I believe, I'm not exactly sure of the exact location on that lot, but where I was measuring the other day, it's probably about 250, okay, let me, let me describe the lot. First of all, the lot is on the northeast corner of Amar and Valinda, and so there's streets on the south and on the west. On the north and on the east is a butts residential. So to those abutting residential to the north, which it's closest to, it probably is close to 250 feet away, but when it, when it's 250 feet away from the abutting residential to the north, then it's within 250 feet of the residential across Amar and across, probably across Amar. I don't think it's 250 feet for, to Valinda, to the house on the, the west side of Valinda, but it is on this, to the south side of Amar.
Would you?
Is that helpful?
Yeah, I know you were out here today. What would you say, 100 feet, 150?
It looks a little more than that, but it's, it's not much.
Okay. Thank you.
Pretty close. And just for the sake of full disclosure, I did have an ex parte communication with the applicant's representative today on the phone, because I went out there about 11:00, as we do, we go check out the sites, and the, I was a little bit surprised to find that the business was open and operating, because I didn't realize that it was. And I'm sure that Mr. Gosney can talk about that when we invite him to speak. Any other questions of staff? Commissioner Kennedy?
Jeff, the 250 feet is that, it's across Amar, that is county, so it doesn't matter where the house is, if it's in city limits or county limits. It's 250 feet from any residential structure, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions of staff? Nope. Mr. Gosney, would you like to come forward, please?
Thank you, Chairman Redholtz. I was the commissioner. Appreciate you, Brian, Mr. Kennedy. Excuse me. I speak to you tonight regarding the request for initiation of this development code amendment. A Replanet representative, Brian Jackson, has had some trouble finding the council chambers. He should be here, and I bet if the, if the commission were to have some, any questions for Replanet directly regarding operations at the site. Just to respond to Chairman Redholtz's comments regarding operation of the facility, it was originally operated by a company called Earthwise, beginning in 2003. It operated under Earthwise's banner in that shopping center until 2013, when Earthwise was acquired by Replanet. And at the time Replanet acquired the center, it was under the impression and was told by Earthwise that it was properly permitted and everything was in order and had all of the requirements met. And Replanet, for the next five years, operated the facility with that, understanding, no complaints from the city, no, no issues. And then obviously, last year, we understood or got contacted by the city, and it was made clear that the proper permits were not actually in hand. We've been operating for, you know, 10 years or so, but, or, well, 15 years, I should say. But, but at that point, we met with, with the planning director and planning staff, and Replanet's understanding following that meeting was that pending this hearing tonight and the, the initiation of development code amendment, if it is to be approved by the commission, that they could allow or would be allowed to continue operating in that time. We understand we've, I met with planning director and had a conversation with Chairman Redholtz today. That's maybe not the case, and maybe there was a miscommunication between the city and Replanet regarding that. In any event, we will comply, obviously, with the code requirements, and if we're operating without the proper permits, that's, that's not something that we'll continue to do. So that will be resolved. The only challenge, just so you know, for Replanet, in order to operate as a small recycling facility, we have to obtain, or Replanet has to obtain, a certification from the Department of Conservation. They essentially submit an application to the DOC, excuse me, to provide recycling services within this convenience zone that's established around the Stater Brothers supermarket, and DOC, after, usually it takes about 90 days, issues the approval for that center, and then it's considered a, a served convenience zone. There's actually recycling provided within that zone. So it is a challenge, if they are to stop, to cease operating, there's a lag period and a, a difficulty in getting a new certification. That's challenging for Replanet, and the city, obviously, will be without recycling services in that location, as it's been handling for the last 15 years. So just a, a little bit of background on that issue. With respect to the, the code amendment, this isn't, the setback issue is a common requirement in many of the cities. Replanet is the largest small beverage container recycling facility in the state. They operate hundreds up and down the coast. We deal with cities regularly on permitting and these kinds of issues. And the one thing, and it's outlined in my, my letter to the commission requesting initiation of the code amendment, the state legislature, when it adopted AB 2020, which is the bottle bill that essentially creates the CRV and encourages that requirement, encourages cities to act favorably when exercising their zoning powers to make recycling, beverage container recycling, more convenient and efficient for consumers. Hence why they create these convenience zones around supermarkets, because they want to encourage consumers who are there buying bottles and cans and things like that, from coming back to also exchange the bottles and cans for CRV, and then theoretically reinvest their CRV back into the store, buying eggs or milk or more recyclables, for that matter. But the challenge that comes with that is, is in regularly, in, it's just a matter of good planning and zoning, supermarkets are typically in small shopping centers located in residential neighborhoods, and oftentimes surrounded by residences on all four sides, like this location is, which can make it a challenge to cite and approve recycling centers, which are required to be in those shopping centers adjacent to these supermarkets. If they're not, then the supermarkets have to pay a daily fine of $100 a day to the state. So it's, it's something that there are teeth that the supermarkets have a challenge with. But the, you know, the difficulty that we face, and which is the purpose of this code amendment oftentimes, is proximity in the parking lot area for where the center is proposed to be located. Obviously, you can't interfere with parking ingress and ingress and interior traffic, location out in front of the store or on the side of the store. It has to be visible so that consumers can see the center and know that they can exercise their CRV rights. So the, you know, our request tonight, and the issue or the item that's before you, is, is to allow us the opportunity to work with Mr. Anderson, the planning department, think creatively about potential options, alternatives, ways to amend the code, to potentially allow for flexibility for the city to, number one, you know, exercise its, its zoning powers favorably with recycling centers, as the state legislature, you know, has advised, but also good planning for residences and consumers, and, and make sure that, you know, whatever issues that may arise from this recycling center, if it is to be approved, you know, are addressed. So that's our goal, is, is to, to work with you, to work with Mr. Anderson, to, to craft a potential amendment, if one can be crafted, that would allow for this center to be located, and also, you know, give the city the power to act, you know, favorably in the future on, on other centers. I'm happy to answer any other questions that, that you might have, or address any issues that may come up.
I have one. Does Replanet have any more locations in West Covina?
We do have one location on Glendora Avenue. I believe it's another Stater Brothers, and at my understanding, that site has been, is legal non-conforming. It was, it pre-existed the code amendment in 2010, I think, that established the 250-foot setback. So it is, it is technically, although it's legal non-conforming, it's, it's not in compliance with the 250 requirement, but it's legally permitted to remain in that location, so long as it's not expanded or, or changed.
It's not a Vons? What, what's the?
The one at Vons has moved to hacienda Francis Kita.
Okay.
It's no longer in the, that would be Glendora Cameron.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's right.
All right. Any questions?
No.
No questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have a question for, for staff. Other than this particular location, do we know of any others that could benefit from this change?
Other shopping center, other markets, is what you're asking?
Yeah.
Well, we haven't done a lot of reconnaissance on that at this point, because there's no code amendment. We haven't been sent off to do any work on that. That would be one thing we would want to look at, is we could, as tell as we, as best as we could, what might be affected. I think, from, from my standpoint, that we don't necessarily want to get rid of the 250-foot separation. We may want to write an exception for something, and that's what we have to look at. And I also would want to check and see how that might affect other places in town. Although most of our, as you probably can realize, most, most of our commercially zoned properties are actually on corridors. So a lot of times, you know, there's a commercial property, and then next to it is a commercial property, and south of it's a, you know, there's, and there's commercial properties across the street. That's what's unusual about this one. It's not in a commercial corridor. It's in a corner, and there's no other commercial around it for about at least a quarter of a mile. That's pretty unusual. We probably have some others like that, but most of, you think of south, I mean, north or South Vincent, you think of South Glendora, you think of North Azusa, even Azusa down at Amar. You know, those are all corridors. There's, so I think this is a fairly unusual center in, in geographically, in that sense, in that sense. Maybe not alone, but at least a, a little bit unusual.
So would it be possible to craft something that is specific to this location?
Well, first of all, we want to look at the, we want to talk to the city attorney. We need to craft something that makes sense, and not just for this location, but it would need to make sense for, this is a citywide code. But I think we could craft something that probably only assisted certain centers that, that were sort of not surrounded by, well, let me say it this way, that were not across the street from, from commercial. Because I think we, we need to be very careful about the lots that are abutting. That's where we had the issues, is when it was a lot, there was a butting a lot. Not, not a lot across the street, it was a lot abutting that was, that was causing the issues, so.
And this, less than 250 feet, that's really a vague, it's kind of open-ended.
Oh, the request?
Yeah.
Well, that is open-ended, because we haven't crafted anything.
Okay, so we could, this, we could craft that in the, in the process to be more specific?
Yeah, so yes, that would be our goal. We wouldn't, we wouldn't want to adopt just less than 250.
Right.
Feet already. We want, we'd want to have specified some, probably, again, some speci, specific distance, and maybe other specific exceptions that might apply in, in certain cases.
I was wondering, Jeff, if, instead of using initiation of code amendment, is it possible to do a condition, like a CUP?
Well, yes, but they are required to have an administrative use permit. So let me, let me explain that. What, I don't really know all the details of how they came to, to be, to come to us, but when they submitted the application, they submitted an administrative use permit, which is like a conditional use permit, it just doesn't need to come to the planning commission. Still requires notification. It can come to the planning commission if it gets forwarded, if somebody requests a hearing, but it, but it does require notification. So it could require a CUP, but, but we, I think we have to be, still be a little careful, because not everyone understands the, I think some of us, those of, those of you who have been around a while, been on the planning commission, remember the issues that were caused by a, a center that was open in 2008. It's been a long time ago now, but it caused some, some pretty significant issues. And so, but the neighbors didn't really understand that till it opened. And then when it opens, you've got a problem, because it's hard to take away their right once they're starting to operate. So I, I think what you're asking is, can we, can we require notification and, and possibly a hearing? We could change it to a CUP, that's possible. If we change, if we open the code up, we can do whatever, whatever the pleasure of the planning commission and or city council chooses. But there already is a discretionary process in the code.
He has it.
To your question, I think one of the requirements in order to issue the administrative use permit is that the center comply with that setback requirement. And so as, as the planning department was processing that application, that setback requirement could not be complied with, and so the administrative use permit couldn't be issued unless there was either some kind of a modification to the existing standards. So that's, that's kind of how we ended up where we are here today.
I was told, it was a few years ago, that mandated by state that there's a recycling center within every two miles, or one and a quarter miles, or one and a half miles?
One and a half miles.
Is it one and a half miles? Okay.
Yeah.
Where, where is the closest recycling center from Valinda and Amar?
Well, it's, it's within one and a half miles of a particular, it's supposed to be any, any business that's selling recyclable containers, beverage containers. Usually they, they cite it, the DOC cites it around a supermarket. And there are certain zones that the DOC can exempt from being a convenience zone, but the, the DOC has an actual, there's a big spreadsheet with every single center and convenience zone within the state, where you can kind of identify spatially where everything is. Without having, you know, access to that and looking at that, I couldn't say offhand. That's something that we can certainly, you know, get and provide access to, to the planning department and, and give you a sense of, you know, what, what zones are currently unserved. And if there is a zone that's unserved, then that market, or that gas station convenience store, whatever it might be, that business is on the hook for the $100 daily fine to the state, because they're not providing recycling services within the zone.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Questions seem to be popping into my mind here. The business that's currently there, the Replanet, I don't know, I remember the Earthwise also, I remember that name being on there a long time back, but we, have we ever, you know, conditioned that business? Is it even a, you know, because the other, other recycling centers have come before us, and we have conditioned them as a CUP, so they can operate, and then we review them, like we did the Sunset Francis Kita, we've reviewed that on, I think, one time. Have we, is this business even on our books?
Well, I've been working with Mr. Gosney, and he provided me some information today that, in his understanding, that Earthwise started in 2003. I haven't done the research to know what, what kind of process might have been required in 2003. Possibly it didn't require a process, maybe it was allowed by right. I'm, I'm not really sure, and it may not be easy to figure that out at this point. We haven't, again, we haven't done a lot of research there. But I think, by all accounts, that the people I've spoken with that sort of know that area realize that there was one that was operating there for some time, and either ceased operation or they ceased getting a business license, which is kind of tantamount to the same thing. So that, that's how we got where we are now. So I don't think, we haven't debated the fact that they were there for a long time. I think the issue is, are they continuing legal non-conforming, or do they need to now conform to the code? And I think everyone's come to the conclusion that they need to conform to the code. Hence, we have this code amendment to try to help us get the code so that they can conform to it.
But this code, this new, this code was initiated, or was changed in 2010, but they were operating in 2003. What was that code at that time? Was there any documentations?
Well, I'm sorry, we, we haven't done any research, because some of these issues, issues just came up in the last day or so, and there's no code amendment before us. So, simple answer, we don't do a lot of research. If, if, if the planning commissioner of city council is not interested in doing a code amendment, there's no reason for us to do a lot of research. If, if you're going to do a code amendment, then yeah, we need to do the research, we need to make sure what, what the information is. But that's how we, we look at things. We, we have enough to do, without working on a code amendment, we have enough to do in our, in our offices right now, to, to, so we don't do that until you tell us, yes, we want you to do that. So if you, if you, if you.
Well, we don't need to get to this point and do initiation of code amendment if we find out what was initially done in 2003, how they came about to do a business.
So you can operate a business, and you can stay in operation as long as you have a continual operation. My understanding, and I think that's why they, keep in mind, they've submitted the request for the code amendment after meeting with us, and they submitted administrative use permit. So there's an understanding by all parties that they do not have ability to operate right now. Whether or not they operated legally in 2003 isn't the question. Whether they've continually operated with a business license and continually been on the site since that time, that's the question, and I think the answer to that, obviously, I think, is no, they, they did not. Otherwise, we wouldn't be talking about this tonight at all.
Thank you.
Okay, so if we, if the decision is made to initiate the code amendment, where does that leave them? I mean, they, right, right now, they're not operating within the code as it sits. Do they, do we, do they have a business license to operate there?
They do not have a business license to operate there, and I think maybe that's a question you might want to, I, I think he, Mr. Gosney did talk about that.
Yeah.
For a minute, and you might want to clarify that. I think, to, to, really, I think it's kind of important for the commission to determine, really, the most important question is, is there, is there willingness to consider and adopt this resolution to consider a code amendment? Because if there's not, then we're kind of, they're kind of in a different place. They can't even, they can't, there's no way they can legally operate there.
Okay. And say the commission takes no action, or decides not to do that, where does that leave them?
Well, then they, we can't even process their administrative use permit. They, they'd have to cease operations and, and remove their, their equipment from the site. They would have one other option, which was to be proposed a variance, but I, I don't, we've talked about that with Brian and Replanet, and that, this was their decision to go forward with this route, and I think it is the better route, because it allows you to do so legally. A variance, you have to meet certain findings, that it's somehow so unusual and different than any other shopping centers in the city, and it's, it leaves you sort of open to wondering, well, if I approve that one, why can't I approve this one, and that one, and that one? And why do you have a code if you're not going to follow the standards?
Okay, now, if we, if we, if we decide not to do this, is there, is there an appeal process for that? Or since we're not making a decision?
Well, there's not an appeal process, but theoretically, they could, they could request for city council to do so.
Okay.
We've never had that, that's an interesting, we've never had that happen, but it's not just, the planning commission and or city council can initiate a, a code amendment.
If it's relating. I'm sorry.
I just, I just want to make one quick point here. I was going to, this is at the beginning. I want to remind the commission that we operate under Roberts Rules of Order, okay? And which that entails, if you wish to be heard, and you wish to speak or make a motion, it must go through the chair. So that is, enables us to have a timely and orderly meeting. So I'm going to ask my fellow commissioners, if you wish to be heard, please let me know, and I will call on you, and you will have the floor. Otherwise, we're just going to have people talking. You wish to be heard? Commissioner Hing?
I'm sorry.
You wish to be heard?
Um, no, not at this moment.
Okay. Commissioner Holtz?
Are we aware of any complaints out there at all?
I am not aware of any complaints. I did not check with code enforcement, so I, but I am not aware, I didn't, I haven't heard any, and I did, I have talked to code enforcement over the last couple of weeks about this, and they did not tell me any. So I, if there are some, there probably haven't been recent.
Okay. Thank you. Yes? Please, go ahead.
If we do go ahead with initiating the code amendment, and then that initiates the study and research that you will undertake, what you bring back is still, you know, subject to this commission's approval, and, and for, for the recommendation to the council for a potential code amendment. So there, by initiating the code amendment, it doesn't necessarily guarantee one way or the other, that a viable code amendment can be recommended, correct?
That is correct. It's also happens sometimes if the planning commission recommends something, when it goes to council, they do something different than what was recommended. So yes, there's lots of charts or routes this could take.
Commissioner Hing?
I am interested to see if, if it's, there's a possibility that they can explore the variance, because in this particular case, in terms of recycle, and in shopping center, there are not that many shopping center, so we can handle the variance with the condition as it comes up. Instead of changing the whole code amendment to comply, because it may not comply, to all shopping center. 250 feet is not that far, if we make it, what? I mean, in terms of distant wise, it's not that far away, but if.
Yes, Commissioner Haques?
And, yeah, 250 isn't that far, but the option of, of the variance is, is something that I understand is, Jeff described something that kind of opens the door to a lot of subjective interpretation of how it was determined that, in this case, a variance was going to be allowed, and in other cases, you know, someone else might bring up, you know, a, a request for a variance, and there might be some reason, the conclusion it comes to, for not giving them the variance, that. it comes to for not giving them the variance that is not very, very clear. It seems to me that a variance is a little bit of a, the weaker route of determining, you know, what's going to work or not work, you know, in order to, you know, have this operation go forward. So, whereas with the code amendment, if it's, you know, if it's, if it's determined that there's a means of amending the code so that this operation can go forward, then there's going to be a little bit, I believe there would be a little bit more solid guidance as to why that code amendment can work, work or not work. So I personally would prefer not to go the variance route.
Mr. Gosny, did you wish to come forward?
This before you tonight is a request for initiation of a code amendment. That's, that's the matter that's before you and that you'll be voting on ultimately at the end of the night. Re-Planet did have discussions with Mr. Anderson in planning about pursuing a variance. And frankly, if the commission were to deny the request for initiation of a code amendment, we may consider submitting an application for a variance if that doesn't work. I think the decision was made in consultation with planning staff that a code amendment would be the more appropriate, the best route to take for permitting not only this center to remain at this location and continue serving residents of the surrounding community as it's essentially been doing for the last fifteen years, but do so legally, rather than a variance. Variance just has trickier findings and different standards that would need to be applied, but it's an option that's on the table if it came down to it, but one that initially is not before you tonight and that we're not asking you to vote on tonight. With respect to the code amendment, really, this is just giving us the opportunity to work with staff and to see if we can craft a solution. I think as Commissioner Jacquez pointed out, you know, ultimately, if we're able to craft something that we think is viable, that will come back before you as the commission, and you'll have a chance to look at it, debate it, evaluate it at that point, and determine whether or not it's something that you want to approve and move on to the City Council. So you still have that discretion, that power. Really, all this request does is give us the chance to work with staff and see if we can figure out a way to make this work. And I would just remind the commission that this center has been there for fifteen years, and it's been operating, to our knowledge, without any complaints. And we'd like the opportunity to continue doing so and to work cooperatively with the city on finding a way to do that. Thank you.
I would rather also, you know, have it in the code as opposed to a variance. I think that opens up, you know, if it's in the code, then it's codified, and, you know, that's the way we do it. Otherwise, you're going to have people coming for variances for whatever. I mean, a variance is something we don't hand out like candy, you know? There has to be a reason for it. Any other questions of staff, or what's the commission's pleasure on this? Who would like to?
Perhaps I could just help, because we, this is a resolution that's before you, it's, the resolution is attachment number one, and resolutions require a reading of a resolution number, and then a motion and a second, and a vote, and obviously, a vote that in a majority, at least three votes would be required to approve that, that motion. And so that would be the process. If you'd like, I can go ahead and read the resolution, then you can, we can see if somebody wants to make a motion and second. Resolution number, I'm sorry.
Let me, let me just ask another, a quick question. Pending a favorable vote, this particular location, would we have to wait for a code amendment to be approved here? And it goes to the City Council too, doesn't it? Okay. So would we have to wait for all that to happen before we can take a look at this operation and condition it?
Correct, that is correct.
Okay, so in the interim, what do they do? Since they're operating without benefit of license and outside of code, I mean, what do we?
They really should cease operations. It really is in the best interest to do that because if there are neighbors who have concerns and it's operating, it just, it sends a bad message to neighbors who are notified about a business that's planned to be open and it, and they're looking out their window and seeing it in operation.
Well, that's kind of the same reaction I had, frankly, you know, when the letter says, "proposed, proposed, proposed," and you go out there and it's not only proposed, it's, it's there. So I can understand how the neighbors would have an adverse reaction to that, you know, kind of continuing discussion a little bit. When I was out there, it's, it's obviously a very popular place. It's very busy. You know, how does that, maybe this is another question again, but how does their being there affect the parking that is, because they take up a lot of parking there, a lot of spaces?
Well, we'd have to, the code does allow for, for it to use some of the parking and, and parking, most of the centers in town have excess parking over what the code requires. We haven't looked at that, but I think that one does. I think they have excess parking, so they can, they can basically lose some of the parking spaces to a use such as that without causing any problems for the code. But we'd look at that, when we did process administrative use permit, that's what we'd be looking at, those type of things.
Okay, yeah, because when I was out there, I mean, there were people pulling up, and they were literally parking, and where other people were parked to, you know, go to the market, to the stores, they were parking. Those people, they came out, they couldn't leave because those people were parked and blocking them while they, and those people know it's there because they showed up with bags of recyclables goods. So they know it's there, and they showed up, and it was an interesting group of people. You had people pulling up in Lexuses, going to their trunk and taking out bags of cans, and you had people rolling up in shopping carts to do the same thing, you know? So I mean, it's, 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 it's serving a purpose, I get that, and we know what the state wants us to do, and we know how important the recycling is. So I, you know, I'm interested to see what the other commissioners have to say, but I, you know, I do have a concern that, you know, if we just initiate this and go forward, that we need to bring something back to condition this, this operator. Who would like to, any comments? What's the pleasure of the, are you good, Jeff, with anything else you want to?
No, I don't have any, I can read the resolution number if you'd like.
Okay, go ahead, please, yes.
That resolution number would be nineteen dash five nine seven nine. So then we'd be looking for a motion and a second, and then we'd have a vote.
Is there a motion on this?
I'd like to make a motion to approve going forth for a code amendment.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Holtz, is there a second?
I will second it.
Second by Commissioner Kennedy. Let's have a roll call vote.
Okay, Commissioner Holtz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hing?
Aye.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Aye.
Commissioner Hakes?
Aye.
And Chairman Reddles?
Aye. So the motion passes five oh, and now the fun begins.
So just, and just to inform Mr. Gosny as well as the Planning Commission all at once, the next step would be to set up a study session. So we'll try to do that within the next month or so, and try to move this along at a good pace for obvious reasons.
Okay, thank you, thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is item number three, which is a minor site plan review, number eighteen dash twenty, categorical exemption, the applicant is Greg Fick for Cadence Acquisition LLC located at seven eleven North Azusa Avenue. Mr. Anderson, staff report, please.
So our planning intern, Megan Wu, will be presenting that report.
Very good, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. The item before you tonight is minor site plan review eighteen dash twenty, request to remodel the facade of an existing five thousand seven hundred fifty square foot single tenant building. This site is located within the neighborhood commercial zone and is surrounded by other neighborhood commercial zones as well as multifamily zones. Sorry. The subject property is approximately eighteen thousand seven hundred seventy square feet in area and is located on the northwest corner of Azusa Avenue and Puente Avenue. The building has been vacant since September of 2017, when the former charter school ended the previous lease. Planning Commission approved Planning Director's modification number seventeen dash thirty-nine on October twenty-fourth, 2017. This approval included splitting the building into three tenant spaces as well as facade renovations comprised of new paint, new alternative materials, new awnings, and new entry features. The existing entry feature was to be removed and three new entry features were to be constructed. Administrative use permit seventeen dash twenty-eight was also approved at this time, allowing the off sale of beer and wine. Building permits were never pulled for this project. The applicant is now proposing to complete a different remodel of the existing vacant five thousand seven hundred and eighty square foot tenant space. So here's the site plan, it stayed relatively the same compared to the previously approved project. The single tenant space will still be split into three individual tenant spaces. The biggest space, which is going to be a seven eleven, will be twenty-five hundred square feet, and the other tenant spaces have not been given a use yet, but are seventeen fifty square feet and fifteen thirty square feet. This is the front, the front elevation and the rear elevation. The applicant is proposing facade renovations, including new paint, new alternative materials, and new awnings. The building is contemporary in style and features a straight parapet roof across the front elevation. The building currently features stucco walls, scorelines, and a cornice. The proposal does not affect the interior floor plan. The building, sorry, the building will be painted in a warm brown color and will feature a mist gray stripe. The entrances will also feature scorelines to match the existing building. Dark brown awnings will be installed across the, or along the north, south, and east elevations. And here I did a before and after with what was originally approved and what they're proposing now. So the top is what was originally approved in 2017 with the three entry features, and then the new proposal is just going to have awnings across the entrances instead of entry features. And this is the rear elevation, before and after, the north elevation, before and after, and the south elevation, before and after. Oh, sorry. The proposed design eliminates the varied roof height, entry features, and stone tile base. The applicant is proposing to renovate the existing building, and the proposed revisions continue to represent an investment in the property. The project is considered categorically exempt according to CECLA guidelines in that the proposed remodel is an existing, is of an existing building, and the proposed use would occupy that building. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve minor site plan review eighteen dash twenty with the conditions of approval provided in the staff report. And that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Megan. Any questions of staff? Commissioner Holtz?
When the, when the applicant came to us before, I'm pretty sure they said they were going to put a seven eleven in that one space, and I think I heard you say it's still going to be, are they, do you know if they're going to be selling beer and wine?
Yes, so, an AUP was also approved along with the original proposal, and that was approved for the seven eleven to sell, for off sale of beer and wine.
Okay, and we don't know who the other two tenants will be?
No.
Okay, thank you.
So that AUP for the beer and wine is still?
Yes.
Good, that, we don't have to consider that again?
Mm-mm.
Right, okay. And are they here, the applicant? Yeah? Any other questions of staff?
I'm going to ask them.
Okay. Come forward, please, sir, and when you have a chance, if you'd fill out a pink card, oh, you have it, very good. And just state your name and all that.
Good evening, Commissioners and staff, my name is Greg Fick with... And Associates, I'm the owner's representative. Wanted to thank you for your time in reviewing this project before you tonight, and we're here to answer any questions that you may have and are in agreement with all the conditions of approval that have been stated in the staff report.
You were here before, right?
Yes.
The initial deal. So the changes are, you want to explain why you're changing it?
Sure, sure. We've added metal canopies, you know, across to the entry features. What we did is, I mean, it's unfortunate, but we took, we are construction managers here tonight as well, and the facade improvements that we proposed previously just aren't financially feasible to make the project council. So that's why we're here tonight. It is a recently modified building, you know, it's not a dilapidated building, and we are making the improvements based on where the entries are going to be proposed. So the, while it's not as, you know, enhanced as what we previously proposed, it is a tenant improvement project of an existing building, and we are keeping it modern with updating fresh paint. It sits there vacant today, we do have some homeless issues out at the site that have been a problem. We are, as you mentioned, it is a proposed seven eleven, we actually are working on CDs right now. With an approval, we can move forward and get tenants in this space.
And it's going to be, it's going to open as a corporate, and then they're going to hand it off at some point? Is that the?
It's my understanding that it'll be, it'll be a corporate, same one.
Okay. And can we see the south elevation, really? I think it's the south, yeah. That door that's there, is that going to be a door that they're going to use to, I mean, it's currently there now, but, you know, I mean, for a seven eleven, that seems weird to have a door. Yeah.
Sometimes they have a, you know, an exit door, a secondary exit door.
So would just be like to get out? It wouldn't be an entrance for...
Yeah, it's not an entrance door, exactly.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, okay. Any questions? Commissioner Kennedy?
Yeah, I have one question. So if you're going to turn it into, one of your businesses is going to be a seven eleven, my issue is going to be the parking, is there going to be enough parking? Because, you know, we know, if you have two more businesses, seven o'clock, eight o'clock, nine o'clock in the morning, everybody wants coffee, and boom, there's thirty-five people there. You know, seven eleven rules twenty-four seven, so that's all my concern.
Yes, so, we do meet the parking requirements per city code. And then any tenants that would come in, we'd have to meet the parking code, be a retail business, so.
What, do you have any idea what other kind of tenants you're looking at there?
You know, they're currently leasing, really, we just need the entitlements approved to come up with a master plan. We do have brokers working on different proposals for different tenants there, but nothing defined yet.
Got it. Any other questions of the applicant? Nope? Thank you, Ms. Fick.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Anyone else wish to be heard on this? I have no other cards? Nope? So we're looking for what?
This, this is a minor site plan review, it doesn't require a resolution, so there's no resolution before you. The conditions of approval, fortunately, the new system we're using does not number pages for some reason, but it's the third page and the fourth page provide the conditions of approval, and we'd just be looking for a motion and a second and then a vote.
So there are no findings to meet?
There's no findings for a minor site plan review, no.
No resolution? Nope? So we're just looking, is Commissioner Holtz?
I was going to make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll make a motion in a second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Holtz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hing?
Aye.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Aye.
Commissioner Hakes?
Aye.
Chairman Reddles?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Good to go. All right, we are at continuation of all communications. Anyone wish to be heard that didn't speak before on non-agenda items? Seeing no one rushing towards the mic, we will go on to commission reports, comments, and miscellaneous items. At this point, I would like to give our new commissioners a chance to kind of introduce themselves to the community with a moment or two background. Let's start with Commissioner Hakes, please.
Okay. I'm, of course, new to the commission, names, my name is Gregory Hakes. I am a longtime resident of West Covina for more than twenty-five years, and I, my profession, I'm a civil engineer, and I work for a consulting firm, and had in my prior life, been, had a long career with County Los Angeles at Department of Public Works, and, and I'm a woodworker. That's pretty much it.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner, I've known Commissioner Kennedy for over twenty years, I've known Commissioner Hakes for about twenty minutes. So, Commissioner Kennedy, lay it on us.
I was born and raised here. It's a great, beautiful city. I'm currently retired. I, I wear many hats, I belong to just about everything, every service clerk in the city. I've been around, I'm sure most of you know who I am, and that's good and bad, as you'll see, I will, the ratings will go up, give me six months. So anyway, that's all I have to say.
Very good, well, you know, on behalf of the commission, I want to welcome both of you, and we'll look forward to working with you and hearing from you, and we can all learn from each other here, so, very good. Any other commission comments? Commissioner Hing? No? Commissioner Holtz?
Done.
You guys had your comment, so. You guys had your comment, so. Mr. Director, city council action.
So the one thing I have to report on that is that the last, council meeting last Tuesday night, they, they did have a hearing on the accessory dwelling units and determined at that point not, basically to follow what the planning commission recommended when it came for the planning commission. So a few minor changes to that code, but not, not, nothing major. That will have a second reading in the next meeting, and that's all I have to report on the city council actions.
Planning Director's Report.
So the Plan Director's Report, as we have three items on there, and for new commissioners, the forthcoming is your chance to see what's coming up over the next couple of meetings. We try to put down what we expect to happen. Sometimes we can't foresee a month ahead of time, so that's sort of where we're at this time. We're not sure there's any items on the second meeting in March. If I got that right? No, the first meeting in March, but we do have items for the February 26th meeting. Twenty-sixth, February 26th. And so that's in the forthcoming report. Also, in that same section, item B is a project status report, which is information that, on items that the planning commission has reviewed over the last few years and are still in process, under construction, in the process of opening, that kind of thing. So we, we provide that generally, we try to provide that once a month to keep you updated on, on the progress of, of different, different things that have been approved. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention that there, I know I, I met with Commissioner Kennedy two weeks ago, and actually, you may not believe it, but this happened after I met with you. So I, I gave you information, then I turned around the next week and was told that there'd been a, a legal change. So the distance requirement's changed from 500 to 1,000 feet for certain items. So we can have some discussion on that. I'd rather not, not tonight, it's not really on the agenda for that reason, I'm not an expert on that, I've just been given the information the last few days, really, so I haven't had a chance to peruse it, but it's something that keep in mind, and if you have questions, if you have any que, that's one of the reasons we give you the forthcoming. If you have a, if you see something that looks like it's close to you, let us know, we can do the measurement, and we can determine if it is, and then we can determine what that means, with the help of our city attorney, and some of you have been here on a long time know that, you've taken advantage of the city attorney and working with him to make sure that you didn't put the city at any liability because of conflict of interest rules. So that's what this is all about, protecting the city. You know, if somebody has to recuse themselves, that leaves four other people to vote, there's plenty of people on the commission that can take action, so it's, it's in everyone's best interest if, if you have a perception of, or there's an actual conflict of interest, it's best to, to recuse yourself. So that, that's what, that, that item's about.
Unless I missed it, do you have any idea what the items will be on the 26th?
Yes, it's under five in your tabs. So right now, we have three items. One is an administrative use permit for a house on Campana Flores.
Okay.
One is a conditional use permit for an adult daycare on West Cameron, and then the third one is a non-hearing item, a study session for a code amendment that's been initiated, sort of like what we just talked about, for alcohol sales at service stations.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, that brings us to the end of the agenda. If there are no objection?
I object.
Oh, sorry, yes?
I did want to mention that we do have a new planning manager, Joanne Burns. Joanne Burns was, I understand, was trained very well. She worked for us from 2006, 2007?
In 2007.
Yeah, she, she worked for us for about a year, year and a half, something like that. And then she left us and went to Lock niata Flint Ridge, and she went to San Gabriel, and then she went to Bell, and now she's back, so.
And then she wised up and came back.
Yes, I guess so. I don't know if she wants to say anything.
Yes, please.
Good evening, Chair, members of the planning commission, and also members of the public here and also at home. I, I grew up around the area, and I love the city, and I am honored to be of service to the community, the planning commission, and the city council, and also my fellow city employees as well. So if, if anybody has any planning questions or concerns, my door is open.
Very good. We welcome you back and look forward to working, working with you. I don't know, we had a planning manager before, didn't we? That title, anyway?
We have not, but when we restructured, we created that, that position. And we also, I will mention, we don't have her here tonight, but we did hire another assistant planner. Her name is Camelia Martinez, so she started Monday, Joanne started yesterday as well, they both started. So you'll see Camelia sometime in the next few meetings when she, either she comes or she has something to present.
And we have Renee.